Welcome everyone to the July 23 planning board meeting. This meeting is being recorded by WACA and is being held remotely via Zoom due to the Massachusetts state of emergency due to COVID-19. Tonight on the agenda, we have 12 Pond Street coming in front of the board, 128 Main, and then also the board reorganization for the new business here. So I see Jim for 12 Pond is here. Jim, are you waiting on anyone else?
I think I'm waiting on Charlie, the owner.
Okay. Maybe we can give him a minute and see if he signs in. And are you prepared to share your screen or would you like me to?
I can share my screen.
Okay, I'm gonna make you a co-host. Jim, do you think the iPhone is Charlie?
I'm not sure.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Oh, yep, we can hear you, Mark.
Okay, I'll wait. Thank you.
Yeah, Emma.
Oh, yep, Charlie, is that you?
Yeah, I don't know what's wrong. I can't. Can you see me?
No.
No, we can't see you.
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
I don't know why. Oh, it's okay. I see all of you.
Okay, then whenever you guys are ready, you can start.
Okay. I'll share my screen. Good evening, everyone. So since our last planning board meeting, Zoom meeting, the board has had brought up a list of items that were sort of discrepancy between the what was approved and what was submitted as part of the building permit forms. So I'll just go down to this on what we had changed. First item was the sort of this mansard tile, the shape of that. That's been changed to to be closer match to what we have submitted, having more curve at the side with that mansard. And the second item was the centering the entry door to these commercial units and equalizing the storefront windows. There's one here. And then there's another one over here. And then on both sides of the building, the storefront has been equalized. And then the third item was this center entrance, residential entrance awning, which was short of, sort of shown as flat in our last drawing iteration. Right now it's shown as, as a, an awning that protrudes out two and a half feet. Sort of see it right in this portion. And it's the material of that roof is metal panel roofing, sort of a red color metal standing seam panel. And then the fourth item was additional detail around the the trims, the window trims and door trims around this center entrance was showing half inch frieble, aluminum review molding with hardy board panels right, right in this area here. And the fifth item was quite important is the, the overall building height. Previously, we had the approval plan that shows 33 feet and eight inch. And on the previous plan, it shows 36 inch. So we had so we had reduced the
Excuse me, Jim, sorry, one second. When we last met, the building height had increased from the 33 feet to what again?
To 36 feet.
To 36 feet. Okay, you said 36 inches, I thought, so I was
Oh, sorry, 36 feet.
Thank you.
So we had reduced the floor, the floor on the second floor and the roof down to 16 inch wood truss. And then reduced this interior ceiling height to eight feet. And that gets us to exactly 33 feet and eight inch to the top of the roof. Another important one was the this trellis that was shown on the previous approved plans. Which is also shown here.
So there's a trellis on both sides, right?
Just this side.
The left side, if you're facing the building, was the left side?
On the left side, correct.
We can put the trellis on both sides if you like, too.
I think the original plan had it on the other side.
Yeah, the original plan had it on the right side, but I think we were kind of discussing that, hey, there's a park on the left side, maybe there's park on both sides, I don't, you know, and how does it really relate to the space, you know? Trying to make the right decision about the trellis relative to the space.
Would you like to see it on both sides?
I'm trying to go back to the site plan and understand if it's a, yeah, maybe it's appropriate both on both sides. It kind of gives that little
Balances, right?
Yeah, and also just a homey feel, you know, for lack of a better term. What do, what do you think? Dale, what's your take on?
I agree with you. It's, it's not so much the balance, it's the feel of coming up to rather than just a wall of windows.
Yeah, just a little
So that's if they want to put them both on there, I think that's good.
Okay, we'll do that. Charlie, you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Jim, one thing, a question I have, I didn't see it. On the, do you have the spec on the roll up windows?
You had sent it to me, but I don't have it available yet.
Okay.
Charlie, those roll up window you have has shown a lot of, a lot of grids on it.
Yeah, but it's, it's all glass, so it don't look like it's, we're actually putting them in a building now. I wish I had a picture. It looks really nice. But if we could present that, just so the board understands that those windows are going to be roll up windows all on the front and the sides.
But it doesn't affect the look of it, just how it looks.
In the commercial front windows, Charlie?
Yes, just on the lower floor.
Yep. Do you, um, do you have a, is there a picture of them that could be shared? Just on, just to visualize it. I think I understand it, but I don't.
I'm actually installing
I don't have it.
in another building. I could email the board tomorrow. Or Emma, shoot it to Emma and she could get it out to everybody, just so you guys can see what they, what my thoughts are on that.
So, so would it be like on the left side, would it be six roll up windows or is each side of the door just a roll up window?
So on each side of the door will be, I don't, so I'd have to work with the window manufacturer to, so they design it for the length, the length of the roll ups. So those panels on each side of the door, Jim, what are they, three feet?
Slightly more than three feet, close to four foot six. The store is
Yeah, so I'd probably put one on each side of the door. If it's like 12 feet, if that's what they can whatever, you know, I think if they made two on each side, it would look weird, but I think they, we could get away with one roll up on each side.
Okay.
So when you're looking at that, it shows transom on top. The, there'll be a bunch of lines through the windows for the, it'll be, look like individual transoms, but they're very narrow. It's really cool and modern looking.
Kind of like a roll up garage door except glass.
Yeah, it's glass.
It's nice to be able to open it like that, I think, to get open it to the outside.
Yeah, it, like I said, I can, I can send some pictures tomorrow of what we're doing. It's beautiful.
Okay.
I think I'm seeing an image of it online. But I can't tell obviously if it's the exact thing you're, you're looking at, but yeah, it could be very nice.
Jim, did I, I thought I sent, did I email or text you the?
You had text me the, a drawing, was it?
I don't know how I could get to my text and pull it up. Is that something you could do or no?
Email and send them from the text. Can you email it to them real quick and then?
Let me see. If I lose you, I'm gonna get back on this thing, on this. Hold on one sec.
Okay, meanwhile, was there some stuff on the back?
Yes, there was additional stuff on the back where he had a
Before we go that, that's fine.
Four bays, protruding bay windows.
Jim, were you able to get them to work well with the?
Yes.
Okay.
It does create some little, little awkward spaces, but I think overall, I think it should work well. The back. For instance, this, this case, we'll just block it out.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's hard. Do you not, you know, want to mess up your inside for something outside either? It's always a hard balance.
But I think overall it works well. Actually, that's the front, the back is this. Yeah, it worked quite well.
Great.
And then there was the adding a window at the sprinkler room. Which is this area, yeah.
Right.
Now, just real quick, I'm looking at those exit doors.
Yeah.
And the, okay, those are in the back, so I got you, okay. The side ones you changed to match the other doors.
Yeah, all the side ones are aluminum storefront windows.
Okay.
Doors.
Looks better.
Okay, and I thought that was it.
I thought, Jim, on the front, if you could go to the front view, I thought there was something with the eaves above those eaves there, the two eaves with the balconies. Do you guys, I thought, I thought there was something with those that had changed. I could be wrong. Do you guys remember?
I'm looking at the
You mean the roof line up there on top of that?
That's correct, yeah.
Now, we talked about that because it goes back. It's not really thin. It kind of goes, it's pretty deep.
Okay.
Not the same situation as other projects.
Got it, okay.
I couldn't find the, the picture of those roll up windows without disconnecting from this. Jim, can you access that?
I'll, I'll, I'll look on it on my phone, see if I can retrieve that.
Basically, would that be, Charlie, would that be sectional like that or would it just be big, long ones on each side, like horizontal?
No, they, they divide it, so you see how there's transoms above the window? They divide it into square panels like that.
Okay.
And the first two would probably be fixed lights and then the rest of them would be movable. They'd roll up and they'd roll up into the ceiling.
Okay, well, basically it'd be a couple of more horizontal lines in there and evenly spaced.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll take, I'll take pictures and email them to Emma tomorrow so she can distribute the ones we're installing now and make sure everyone likes them.
Thank you.
Hold, hold on one second.
If I can, I just Googled roll up commercial windows. And there's some examples there. Obviously, I don't know if it's the exact same ones, but of how they look and how they, how they operate.
Do you have pictures of the roll up windows on Broadway, the storefronts, that were installed?
Tricia, do you want to just share what you're seeing? It's probably
Yeah, I could. I'll share my screen. It's just a Google search.
Yeah.
Let's see here. And then you can point out if there's something. Let me know if you're seeing what looks like a Google search.
Yeah, do you see the picture of the black one that's, it looks like in the kitchen?
This one, this one on the side?
Yeah, it, it looks like that.
It's basically like a, a glass garage door, similar segments to the garage door, but it, it has clear, clear glass in each pane.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, and there's a bunch of different types, so, but, yeah, I think it could be, like you said, kind of a modern look, a modern application.
And you can see the one in the middle there, looking at how it kind of looks. Yeah, with the door in.
My wife actually just found a good example of what we're installing now. She's gonna email it to Emma.
Okay.
But it's pretty much on the same idea. Except for the, except for the top panel. Like as, as the, the ceiling height gets higher, the, the building we're building now, the top two panels are fixed. And then the three to four panels below that, yeah, are the movable ones. And when it, when it's rolled up, all the panels line up. It's pretty cool looking. You don't see anything rolled up.
So it's kind of more, it's kind of more like this example where it looks like the top is fixed.
Yeah.
These are wider, but on a bar maybe, and it kind of rolls up from there, yeah. It's a nice idea during these times when it's going to be important to get a lot of fresh air in indoor spaces. So.
And they're actually beautiful when they're done, too.
I'll stop my
Do you want to go through my email? We're not too good on computers over here at this house. Well, while she's doing that, is there anything else we, we missed out on or we, do we hit all the points?
I think I think those were the major points that we hit on last time, at least according to my notes. There were just, you know, some normal things that kind of just get tweaked in the course of design, which I don't think are notable. I think we talked about being able to see the rendering, like the color rendering, because it's hard always to compare a working drawing or a construction drawing to the color rendering. I think we went through them. But, um, you know, at some point it'd be good to see the, I assume all the colors are going to be what we saw on the original the, the original submission. And I think the colors get submitted later in person. Isn't that right? Then we
That's normal, yeah.
Yeah, usually we look at the samples. So we're just assuming that, that all the colors, which obviously I'm sure haven't been ordered yet. You know, will come, well, hopefully, we're, hopefully we're meeting in real life and we'll be looking at the colors and then and that they will match what was, what was submitted in the, in the approved renderings.
So, yeah, we could do a markup board and bring it in.
Oh, that's right. I think maybe you did talk about that, you know?
Jim, are the windows on this building black?
The windows are black, yes.
All right, good. Okay. So, yeah, we can do a markup, get all the siding and the roofing materials and put a board together.
Yeah, and if you make sure to include a sample of the, the little entry metal, I think that's important because it's so hard to model that kind of metallic color, so.
Okay.
But that'd be great, so.
Did it go through? Emma, are you with us?
Muted.
We lost her? Well, we sent her an email.
Emma, you're on mute.
See it by looking at my phone from your phone?
Yeah, it's gonna be
I can see the email and it's a blank square, so I'm just refreshing. So all I can see is a blank square. Is it possible to send it like as an attachment? Or if you just try resending, something's not
I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do it right now.
Yeah, she's gonna resend it. But it didn't download yet? Dale, do you know how to play those guitars or are they just prop?
It's a prop.
He's, he's fiddling.
Got some brothers that know how to do it.
Yeah.
Live for guitars and hamburgers, isn't that about right?
I'm known for mostly hamburgers.
Did the returns to sender mail work or are you sending out and it's not receiving to the sender? Because it could be, you could have a failure in sending.
We're, we're rescinding it again.
Okay, so meanwhile, does anyone else have any other concerns about the, oh, we're waiting for that? Any other issues with what they've corrected or haven't? Other than the colors, we can't see the colors on this one, but
I, I appreciate the attention to detailing, going through the list and making it work.
As long as you make sure you build the same building that's on the picture.
Listen, we're, we're very excited to get this one started and know we're off to the right foot, you know? It's gonna come out beautiful.
When will you do the first shovel for the foundation?
As soon as we get the permit.
Ah, you gotta do the hoops. Good luck. Yeah, good luck. And there you go, it's there.
Yep, this is the photo Charlie sent me.
Yeah, it's nice.
And it, this is from the inside looking out. It, it looks not as dark. It looks really nice inside and out.
So the windows, the windows, as we're seeing them on the drawing, will have some additional lines through them.
Horizontal lines, yeah.
Horizontal lines.
We've installed those windows that bifold open in the past in a bunch of restaurants we built and they're always, they're, they're very difficult. The, these vertical rise windows are very, they're much nicer and easier to operate. The, the problem with the ones that bifold, they tend to sag after a while.
You know, I think, I think the whole idea is good and the look is, looks good.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think it'll be fine. It is, it is a little different to see, you know, that what we're looking for, looking at in the drawing still isn't quite the way the building will look because it doesn't have those windows in there.
Yeah.
But, but I do think the windows are a nice idea and modern and a different way of using the space than a traditional use, so. Those windows
This is what I had to go with me because it's a brighter version.
It's a little different. Say that again?
Do they use those windows in other applications besides bars and restaurants or if you have some kind of business where you don't need to open? You don't have that kind of interaction, you just don't open the windows that way?
This, so to be honest, this is the first time I'm personally using these. I, the only place I've seen them is in other restaurants. So I actually, I know an architect in Somerville that used something similar to this in their house as their windows.
So it allows for flexibility for a restaurant, but if it's another type of business?
Yeah. It's like having a closed storefronts as well, so you can open it or not open it.
Yeah, I could, I could see that.
Just, just looking at the way they're designed, they're gonna be, they're gonna stay in place a lot better than, than opening the the bifolds, you can tell just because of experience wise.
Yep.
These will always look straight.
These aren't made to be an exit, like an entrance or an exit either. There'll still be a door, still be doors. Catherine, can you close that? I'm just on a conference call.
So on these windows, there'll be, on the bottom, there's gonna be counters popping in there, counters.
Excuse me?
They're gonna be seating in front, like permanent seating, so that people can't walk out through these.
Yes, correct.
And, yeah.
They don't go all the way to the ground, do they?
They're gonna go all the way to the floor.
Oh, they are, okay.
Yep.
But then inside, it'll be a little counter, wall, wall bar or whatever that is, a seating area that's built in. But then inside, it'll be a, a little counter, wall, wall bar, or whatever that is, a seating area that's built in.
Yeah, the, the tables and chairs will be right in front of them.
Well, just because there's not gonna be an issue of the tables kind of moving out or anything right onto the sidewalk.
No, it'll, it'll be fine. Can you close that door?
I mean, I, I like the windows, but I'm wondering if the drawing, we can, if the drawing can just be submitted, that we can actually see them on the elevation. So it's kind of a big, you know, so we don't see the, we don't see the horizontal drawings. We don't see that the windows now go all the way to the floor where, in these drawings, that they don't go to the floor. So, it's kind of a big, in a way, it's a big change. I, I think I like it. But it's, it's not
It on the plan.
What's that?
It would be nice to see it on the plan. How it worked with the rest of the building.
Yeah. Jim, can you, can you put that on there, please?
Yes, I can change it, yes.
Thank you. Well, can you show the picture of the building the way it shows now? But Catherine on, on the video thing too. Jim, can you pull the plan up? Oh, there you go. Let me just see.
Because it looks like there's a little bit of a wall underneath. Is that how it's gonna be?
Um, the, Jim, can we make them go all the way down right to the floor? Or do we need to keep that? That's like a sill almost.
Well, that's kind of the question. So if you're, if you're proposing that they go to the floor because you have this new idea about the windows.
Yeah.
It'd just be good to see what the actual final result is, you know, and how it looks on the facade.
Jim, can you put that on the plan and then color, put some color on these?
Yes, color on, on, on everything?
Well, you know, siding and stuff, the hotty and the roof shingles and stuff.
Yep, I can do that.
Yeah, because you're right, Trish, that'll, if it goes all the way to the ground, it'll change the front. That's kind, that'll be a different look.
And also the different
It'd be nice to see it, not that it's bad, I'm just saying it'll be different, so.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. We don't, we just don't want to be in the same position where that, that what's being built isn't what's on the approved drawings.
Yeah.
Um, so it'd just be good to, to see it. Intrigued by the idea, definitely. So, but it'd be good to see the elevation as it's actually intended to be built.
Yeah, because functionally, I think it's an awesome idea.
Is it energy efficient? How energy efficient are these windows?
So, they're, um, they, they are glazed windows, but as far as energy efficient in commercial space, it doesn't work the same as you would think for a residential space. So they, they don't usually have energy codes for the commercial like they do for residential. So they are, they are insulated. It is, you know, I don't know what the level of the low E is on them, but they are, it is insulated glass.
Okay.
So Jim, can we, we can make that change to those windows?
We could, yeah.
Any other issues? Ever, anyone have any other issues with anything else?
I don't think so.
Getting close. Like you said, we're, we're pretty visual on this board, most of us. And we have, we, it's good to see the finish rather than have it described, so that's why we asked for the, you know, the, the final drawing to look color-wise and look pretty much what it's gonna end up like. So what kind of, is there any lighting on the outside of this in the front?
Certainly without showing any light.
Um, Jim, did we put, did you spec any lighting for outside or no?
No.
No. On the site plan, does it show post lights in the front?
Not in the front, but in the parking lot. Never again in the parking lot.
Okay.
That, that's, I mean, that's a good question. It's a little difficult to think about because we know the state is beginning their work on 126. And so, obviously, the, the right of way in front of this is gonna be, it's gonna have a lot going on between the building of the building and then what the state is doing there. So, will there be utility poles in front of this building? Or does anybody know the answer to that?
Yeah, I don't know.
There was no, sorry, Emma?
Give me one minute and I can pull up the plans.
Okay.
You guys can keep discussing though, because there's like a lot of pages, so I'm gonna find the right page first.
Not sure there's anything left.
Yeah.
Presu, presuming, presuming there's not, telephone, I guess, so are we basically saying from an outside lighting perspective, we, we just, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing specked out in the plans, there's nothing to really discuss based on the plans that we see right here, right now, right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So Trish, is that something we would want to review as part of the, kind of, that final color scheme and trim finish review that we kind of discussed?
Um, you know, it's, I assume as they, you know, they're gonna have locations for the light fixtures outside. So if that's something in doing the, the rendering and in changing the windows, if we can put something in there to represent a light at this point, I don't think, obviously, the exact fixture has to be selected, but it would be, it'd be good for the elevation, I think.
Okay.
I don't think we need to hold them to picking an exact fixture.
You know, just where they're gonna be located and if they're gonna be giant spotlights or, or hang, you know?
Yeah.
Jim, I got a question. On, on the front of the building where it says signage, is there, there an overhang there enough to put recessed lights in those spots above where it says signage?
Those are 18-inch overhangs, so we can probably put, put it like a spotlight or downlight.
Yeah, just like a recessed light, puck lights or something to shine on the door and the signs.
Yes.
It appears that there will be what looks like three streetlights in front of this building, and I'm happy to show you those plans if you'd like to view them.
Sure. Thank you for looking it up.
Okay, so what's the next move is to come back with the color and the final windows drawn in and lights if you're gonna have them?
If we, if we're gonna come back, do you think it would be okay? I know we talked about this before, releasing the permit for the foundation, but for some reason, the building department didn't want to do that.
I think we said, we had said it was okay.
Yeah, then the building inspector said no afterwards.
Okay, that's gonna be a something Emma will have to deal with that because that's
Yeah.
town hall situation.
Yeah, it should, I think it should be okay if we said it was okay.
Okay.
Or even further down that, but so let's, we, we definitely would want you to be able to proceed, I would think.
Yeah.
Emma, is there any color there?
Sorry?
So, last time we spoke to Mr. Sabudo, we had indicated that we were, and Peter as well indicated that we were okay with the foundation permit being released.
Yeah, so I'm aware that the building department wasn't comfortable doing that. I'm not sure if Peter's having discussions with them. But we can certainly look into that.
Okay.
Just to make sure they're aware that we're okay with it.
What, when would the next meeting be?
Um.
The 13th.
I mean, I, I think I'm comfortable, I mean, I think I'm comfortable moving forward as long as we set like an outer limit for when we have the color and trim discussion, like let's say, you know, but I don't know, I don't know how you guys feel, but like, from my perspective, this has been a thorough process and it's been a lot of transparency and, and straightforward discussion. They've been responsive. I don't know, so.
I think we did, we've done that before where we put a stipulation to bring the color samples in at some point because obviously you're not gonna need them right now. So you can get started and then at a later meeting, bring in the colors and we'd make a decision on the colors. If that works for you, we've done that before.
Yeah, that, that helps because then, I know Mike Chrisafouli said that he didn't want to issue just the foundation permit. So it's gonna take us a while to get started anyway, to be at the point where the building's being framed, so if we could get, if he could release the permit, we could start.
Yeah.
Then we could still be proceeding with the, by them, we could still submit the plans for the next meeting to
Yeah, because we can, we can approve the colors at another meeting and approve it with the condition that, will you come back to give us the colors before you put them on?
Okay, and then though, we'll have Jim do change of plans showing the roll-up windows.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody or?
Yeah, I think that works. I'm wondering about the windows, you know, is that the same thing? Can we approve and then, um,
By the time the building's being framed, we can, if you, you don't like the way they look, we can stick with the original framing plan.
Exactly, yeah. It's gonna be the same size, you're gonna, you're gonna frame it for those roll-up windows and then if
Yeah.
if we really hated it, you would put the standard windows back in, right?
Yeah, there's a little, there's just gonna be a little knee wall there.
Yeah.
So, either I take it out or I go, it's easy to build it.
Yeah.
So I see, so we'd be approving based on the drawings we see, um, knowing that you're gonna come back at some point and say, hey, can I change the windows? And we'll, okay, that sounds good.
That's good. You can Yeah.
So, let's, if you guys can do that, that would be great, and then we'll still submit everything for the next meeting, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah, good. So you're getting, Emma, what we're, we're talking about, that we need to put in the decision to conditions of the windows and the colors and the lights, we'd like to see all those plans.
Yep, and to clarify, so based on this meeting, you're allowing the entire building permit to be issued, not just the foundation, with the understanding that they will be back for those mentioned items, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure I understand.
And there's no question, you can start.
Yeah, most towns or cities, they put in there that they will not release an occupancy permit until the board is satisfied.
Yeah, and that's usual, yeah. But you'll come back before and we'll go over this and make sure we're on the same page.
Can we just? Go ahead, Charlie, sorry.
Well, it would be great if we could get that permit issued. This way Mike has no problem issuing the whole permit. And we'll still, we'll still come back to the next meeting.
Okay, I'm good with that.
This way Jim could draw the windows in and get all the stuff, the lights on there and we'll still plan on, whoops, on August 13th.
Yeah, we're basically approving what we see in the drawings today, which I think we all agreed is good. And then the, then the issue of the new windows came up. So, we're approving what we see today, and at some future time, you'll come with the new windows and ask for a change and we'll take a look at it, but it's promising. Is that, that's what everyone's understanding is?
And the color, the color scheme.
And the color, right, right.
I, I think that's, I think that's the right way to think about it is, I think you phrase it well. We're proving what we see today and you'll come for a change to do the roll-up windows as well as, whether it's in the next meeting or, you know, in the next, between here and September, we'll see the finished color and trim uh, detail to approve that as well.
And so I think it would be, Emma, correct me if I'm wrong, but we would be approving it as it is with, and with, how would you word that? So they don't have to come back to do a change with an option to change the windows or how would that work? With the final window configuration to be approved, you know, to be vigorously approved. I don't know how that works. I don't want to make it so that they do it and then they have to come back through a whole process to do a change.
Do you guys have a de minimis change? Do you do that? Do you know what that, how they do that? So usually if a, a plan gets approved and then they, they call it a de minimis change, but if it's de minimis, the board doesn't need to see it, so that ain't gonna work. Usually the building commissioner can decide if it's de minimis or not, so, but you, the board needs to see this.
Yeah, well, just like we did on the 128, we told them it's approved and then we would approve the color at a later date. We would get the final color, so windows and the color and the lighting, we would approve at a finer, or we would vary, you know, I don't know how you worded it, we worded it, but would be decided at a later
Yeah, I'll need to get back to you sooner just because of the windows. We're gonna frame them.
Yeah.
So what we need to frame, frame them for.
But I guess if we're approving this, this one, it's gonna be approved for what's there.
Yeah.
And then we'll put in there that will, color will be decided at a later date.
Yeah, I think that would be a minor modification and they just come back and show what they're doing, either the windows or in the color, both, and we move forward. I think that's fine.
Okay, well, you know how to word that all up, I'm sure, right?
Yeah, I'll write up a memo and let the building department know that they're moving forward.
Okay. And then, so we would have to have a motion to approve this with the conditions that we talked about?
So moved. Do I need to restate? I'm, I'm, I move that we approve the revised drawings as presented with the color, the final colors to be shown at a later date and a possible change in the windows to be, to be presented by the applicant.
Seconded.
But we're approving the windows as is.
I'll second it. All those in favor? Gail Buchanan, aye.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
That faces 4-0-0.
Thank you.
Now you can get your permit, get your started on your
Yeah. That'll be good. And I, I'll, I'll still email Emma some pictures tomorrow so she can forward them to you guys just to see what the ones that do look like.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
Okay.
Uh, next on the agenda is 128 Main. See, at least Okay. Um, do any of you need to share your screen?
Uh, yeah, I'll be sharing my screen.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we're obviously back in front of the board to re-present some of the items that were concerned and brought up in the last, uh, meeting. Vast majority of them are just gonna be literally showing you, we have photography of what's existing now, we also have a list of changes. Dan Santa Cruz from my office has been working closely with Carlos Hans Evolution Development to Dan Santa Cruz from my office has been working closely with Carlos Hans Evolution Development to try to bring this back together again and make it a suitable looking project for the downtown. So I'll turn it over to Dan, who's been working diligently and daily on this.
Yeah, so give me one second. I'll share my screen here. Yeah, so a few weeks ago, we met with Peter on site. You know, overall, we talked about what we could do with the facade, taking steps to remedy the items there. So you know, the main thing on the front was eliminating paneling on the second and third floor, as you could see. We've added trim around each of the windows as we talked about. The faux balconies, we've constructed with the railings, pretty close to what we had to the original rendering there. We also added goose neck lighting, as in the original render there. We took a look at the overall view of the facade. I think the original render had a black panel for the, the signage. I think with the overall look, as we looked again, we, we thought it made sense to go with a white panel and then we could do black lettering for signage. Whatever is going to go in the commercial space there. And on the first floor, we tried to bring it as close to the original render as possible. We added paneling around the bay windows. The single window here and the main commercial entrance. And yeah, so yeah, the first floor facade has been updated to match as closely as possible. And let me just bring up the rendering we sent over. So this is the latest rendering and what we want to do is address this corner as well. We removed the paneling below the windows on the second, third floor. On the corner here, which is more or less the, the main focal point of the building. And then same with above the lobby space, which is this door here. And then if you want, I could go through material lists. Otherwise, that's pretty much what I have.
So the, so the proposal, if I'm looking at this rendering, is that the panels at the left side under those windows are going to remain there, just, just hollowed out? So there are frames? Is that the proposal that is before us?
Yeah, in, in effort to, you know, save money for our client here, we want to do a painted panel to match the siding. We thought it'd be best to address it further back in the building. As you could see, we wanted to address the corner, obviously, but as we got further back in the building, we thought it could be good to break up the siding as you see and do the painted panel.
So the, the railing, the steel railing in the front of the building as presented doesn't match the railing on the side and is inconsistent with the final approved plan rendering. And I.
Let's go to the front photo again. Yeah.
Yeah. So can you bring up the final rendering that was approved by the board?
Yeah.
Please. Yeah. So I mean, I, I think, I think matching the railings on the side for the front. I, I don't know why it would have a different railing in the front than the side and I, and I think that's the railing we approved. I think the railing on the side of the building is what we approved. I think it's fairly consistent with that and I, I don't, um, yeah. I don't, I, I don't, it seems just a bit odd to me to go with that different railing. Are, are the windows that are installed in this building smaller than what we see on the rendering? Are those the same sized windows? Because they, they look, there's a lot, there's, the windows seem far smaller in the rendering you're showing versus the rendering that we approved.
I think it's just the angle that the rendering is taken at. It might be a little different, but you know, the intent was to get it as close as possible. You know, with that photo that we took today. You know, I think it was. Now let me just go to it.
Yeah, so I mean, there's.
Yeah. You know, we're pretty much, we're trying to get it as close as possible.
And the shingle collar?
Uh, we haven't addressed that. We wanted to get your thoughts on, again, on the original rendering. Or on this new rendering, rather.
Yeah, additionally, the front door doesn't have the dormer windows on the side. Like if you go back to the current photo and just contrast the front door of the building, the main to this building, if you could give me the, yeah, so you see that, I mean, it's just a double door with like a sea of, of panel on either side. And if we flash that back to the, also, I, I note that we basically have three singular windows for bay windows instead of actual bay windows in the front there. So if you go back to the, to the final rendering for just a moment, please.
Yeah.
That, I mean, that, that door, no, not this one, the, the final approved by the board, please.
The original.
Yeah, the original. I'll start using that term. Um, I mean.
There's, that's like a three, four foot window on the front and the ones you have are like two foot. And it's just a lot more window on the rendering, which doesn't look so boxy and.
I mean, the front door looks, I, I don't, I mean, I guess that's a singles, a single door with two dormer windows. I'm, I'm sorry if I'm not using the right terms.
Yeah.
Side lights, right? And now there's, there's a double, there's a double door. Is there, uh, is there the lights, are there three panes above the window? I don't think so. I think it's just a door. And there's actually room for a sign above it in the, in this rendering, if you go back to the current condition.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got no, no dormers above and no side lights. So I'm not.
Yeah, so we do have the, the light above and then the intent, I don't know if you can see my mouse, but you know, the intent to have the signage there above the, the top light.
Yeah.
You potentially zoom in on that area. It might be helpful. So it's a little dark on the screen right now.
I, I see the windows now. I apologize. Yep, I just was losing the frame there. Got it.
Mike.
Yeah.
And in lieu of the, the side lights you're referring to, it's a double front door. Is that, that's the difference. There is a signage to have 128 Main above there as well.
Yep, in this zone.
So the only thing I would say is I know when we last left the meeting and we had a pretty good dialogue back and forth. Someone had suggested on the, on the, on the board, someone had suggested, I should say, that when we come back, you guys would, would look at it as a composition as a whole right now versus just trying to go back and forth and keep on comparing it to the previous. So I was hopeful that we could try and do that as an exercise today, if possible.
Yeah, I think, I think the issue is in doing that is that the, the end result here still looks heavy relative to the original, which had more glass in the bays, more glass in the door.
Lighter roof.
There is, there is some difference in how things are structured. I'm not sure what it is. But when I look, I don't know how the heights have changed, but certainly when you look at the original rendering for the corner windows, you know, you have about four and a half clabberds under it on the, on the rendering. And in real life, we have maybe, you know, close to double that amount, you know?
Yeah. So that's why, that's the question about the windows, because it's just so much more wood.
So the windows could be the same size and something could have happened with the, you know, the height of the, the first story area, but something is different. And, and I think that's the case with the front door and with the bays, with this really heavy structure in between each of, there, the windows are much thinner than they are in the rendering. And the curve of the roofs and the, the color of the roof. So all of these things, it doesn't have to be these things, but all of these things together give us a much heavier building in appearance than what was approved. I wasn't here during that approval process and I'm not sure when the black sashes came in. I don't know if that was approved by the board at some point or not, but that's also part, you know, I know they're very trendy, but they tend to make a building look heavy. And so it, it kind of contributes to the kind of heavy knit feel of the building. And so if we're looking at it as a, okay, looking at it with fresh eyes, how do we get it light again? How do we get it feeling lighter than it does right now? Because all the changes made have just weighed this thing down. And it's unfortunate. It's, it really is.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I, I just, I, I just like, it's, there's, I, I'm, you know, I, I appreciate fixing what's been fixed, but I, I agree with everything that you said, Trish. I mean, I just, it looks value engineered is what it is. It's not, it's not what we approved. It's just not, you know?
As far as the light roof, the reason why we changed it, there, I think the original drawing you brought in when they were going through this was black. And, and we changed it to light just because of the heaviness of this building being right down, you know, big building down there. And if you look at both of them, this one, the roof just stands right out. And if you look at the other, the drawing we approved, it kind of blends in with the church a little bit and the background. I mean, it's, it, it makes the whole building just stick out like a sore thumb. And those, I don't know if you're calling them dormers or not, but that's just a whole different look. It just doesn't.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, the siding looks better, but you're right. Once you put the siding on, the windows look really tiny. I mean, it's a diff, the whole thing's different. I mean, I'm really sorry we're at this place and I understand about financially. But, but somebody, I mean, we approved that other building. And we made concessions so you guys could, and you got everything you wanted out of it and we really didn't get very much of what we wanted. And now we're asked to change what we got that we negotiated and adapt it so that you guys can get more benefit from whoever screwed that up. I, I don't know if you understand what I'm saying or not, but we, the reason why we got to add all these, you know, color of the roof and approve that drawing is because you guys wanted, you know, you didn't have enough parking to put those apartments, many apartments in. We waived the parking. And you got that. And now you got your apartments and work, and now you're asking us, okay, we got what we wanted. Now you get what we present because it's going to cost too much to get what we, what you said we could have. I mean, I mean, I'll, I'll. Bad, but I'm, I'm just like, this is a whole different building. It doesn't.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. It's different than what we presented as far as the concept and the words that you're describing. It's, it's definitely not that theory or that intent, but I understand the frustration, but um, it's, it's not a, we got what we wanted and try to pull this wool over your eyes here. This is.
I didn't say that. I'm not saying you're trying to pull the wool over ours. I'm just saying, we negotiated that first one and we got a lot of that stuff. Including roof color, which was a big discussion one. I remember the meeting about the roof color. And we didn't get it. And now it's back to the original drawing with the heavy looking roof. And I'm not saying you guys did that on purpose, like we're going to give them this pretty drawing and then we're just going to build whatever we want. I don't think that happened. I think someone made some decisions thinking, oh, this might look better than that. I don't know what because I wasn't there, but we gave you, I mean, what do we do? We take, okay, well, we'll just take back. Now we were going to require the parking. What do we do? Because you guys got what you wanted out of it and you're going to have that and make money off of that. And and this is what the town got is this whole different thing that there was a lot of items that we helped tweak it in to make it look as good as we could. And for that, we gave you the extra, you know, waived some of the parking and stuff and then we get this.
Yeah, I think the bottom line probably is it's just not ready yet. Like, you know, you, you got the low hanging fruit. Maybe on the changes, but I think it might, it might take more than low hanging fruit to get this thing back to what was approved. It's unfortunate, but it, it, it was pretty far gone from, from what, what was approved. And it's unfortunate that I'm not sure how it got that way.
Yeah, someone didn't say something and say this is not, I mean, when, when I went out there, the, the one we approved, the picture is hanging right on the fence in front of it. You look at that and you look at the building and it's kind of the same, but it's not.
I mean, it's, it's important to note that at least to the extent that I looked at the, the submitted approved construction documents that were submitted for the building permit, they look like the rendering. You know, so it was sometime between when the architects turned in these drawings and got approval, which, which matched these renderings. And when construction stopped here, that someone made decisions that were against the construction drawings that, that were submitted for the building permit. So so up until that point of getting that building permit, everything was a go, at, at least in, in my review of it, which wasn't totally thorough, but it looked the same to me.
And, and think like, I, you, it, I understand you don't want to go back to that first drawing because we can't really get there maybe. But things like if we were approving this, if this is what you presented right here, there would be an issue with the bay windows. We'd say those things look so boxy. It just doesn't look good. The dormers, they, they look like little shed roof, like it's not even, it doesn't even stick out. You know, on like a dormer, it's not, but, but what you presented us looked much better. That's. But now here we are.
I'll just say about the dormers on the front there. We did address the concerns there and we, we did build them out further.
Doesn't have the mansard roofs on them.
Yeah, I was just going to say Dale, the, the, the face of them have been altered and changed, but obviously the mansard, the swoop, the witch's hat is not there. And that's the differential.
I mean, neither the, neither's the finishing on the eaves above the third floor windows. The, the bronze metal with the three sides is not present. So.
Yeah, I mean, it's. Is that something you're working on doing? Or, or?
I mean, at this point.
Just approve this.
It's, it's difficult. I mean, Tricia knows where I'm at and Dan's at. We're, we're here working. Carlos is here and on the line and can kind of speak to what he can and can't, or not what he can and can't do, but what, what he's trying to do and what he's trying to get back to level here. I mean, we, we've talked about what happened. We, as you said, we had renderings, we had plans, everything was submitted and then we came out and things were modified without, you know, our, our discretion or against our, you know, so here we are. We're trying to rectify it. So that's why I was hoping we could try to look at the man as, as we have it here. I was actually, we were under the impression, we were just going to show an updated rendering. Carlos actually went ahead and did a majority of the construction to show it. So he said, well, we'll, we'll have a photograph. So, which is great, but obviously there's, there's quite a bit of work that went into getting it now to this level. So.
So this, this one here that you're showing is what you want, you're proposing to do.
Correct, yeah.
Not addressing the dormer roof, you're not addressing the, the railing still different, the.
I mean, look at the black space under the, the air, airflow vent in the front, where there was supposed to be the witch's cap and there's not. But look at that grate, the air grate. There's that black space between the air grate and the edge of the roof. If you go back to the photo from this morning, that air grate comes all the way down to the light roof line. It looks like, I mean, so this is a red, I mean, that's not even the rendering. It looks like, I mean, so this is a red, I mean, that's not even the rendering you're showing there. That doesn't match.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I mean, it's just, it's not.
So, so.
Not gonna happen.
So what you're proposing is what that other proposal, that rendering you just showed was, that's what you have to do. And I appreciate that your siding looks better. It's getting there. It's, it's work, it's progress. But that is, it's, it's gotta be right.
Like, I guess the question then, and I appreciate, you know, your, the position you, you're taking and how can you help us? Is there a middle ground here that we can take to make, to lighten the building up, so to speak?
There's, I'm thinking because you're already going to get away with a lot of stuff. There's an extra post in there that has to stay now. There's a lot of things on there that are gonna, you know, we're not going to make you tear the building down. Maybe possibly the panels on the back end if they don't show, maybe, maybe. But there's just a lot of. Like Trish, that it is such a heavy building and we went over that and over it when we were at the meetings. That we were trying to lighten it up and, and, and blend in as much as possible. And this just sticks out like it's in your face.
Would one or two members be willing to? Have kind of a, maybe a round table or a technical meeting or, or something in the meantime, because obviously we show up and we show up another couple of weeks later or a month later. In the meantime, there's limited discussion. Is there any way we could potentially? Work a little more harmonious so that we can hear your feedback as we move through versus kind of just arriving at this, presenting it to you and then. You know, having.
If you would present, rather than working a little bit at a time, because we can't, I don't think that's right for individuals to go. And give their input without the rest of the board. But if, if you would present. A plan that's actually going to change some of that stuff that we've been talking about since this, you know, the black roof, the heavy roof, the dormers. You know, the bay windows, some of that stuff that we've been talking about. But you came back with the rendering that doesn't have any of that in it. So I, I don't, I don't know what the, why it's our, like, we have to. Move, I mean.
I'm not trying to.
Uh, yeah, I, I understand, but I'm, what I'm saying is that you're presenting something that's not close to what. We're telling you that right now. We told you that the last time I told you. And you came back with one and it didn't address a lot of the issues that we had. So then you, you're going to have to keep coming back until you address the issues we have. And I, I appreciate that you're, you went ahead and started changing the siding and it's starting to look better. But if you would bring. A proposal that addressed the issue. And, and we're, we're already, we're already going to let some of this stuff slide. I mean, you know, we almost have to because.
I mean, that's your, that's your opinion Dale, right? This is a board decision. So.
Yeah. Exactly. Should say, I'm willing to let a few of these things, you know, be okay modification, but. That's my opinion is that if, if you want to move this along and you know what all our issues, we keep talking about the color of the roof and we keep talking about. The dormers and we talk about the bay window. We went over all this on the last time you were here. But then none of that was addressed in this drawing. So basically you changed the siding and made those little balcony areas different. On the, on the building and that's.
If, if I could, I, this is without Carlos's input, which, you know, I'm, I'm doing my best here, Carlos. So if I misspeak, let me know, but. I think generally on this, this facade that we're looking at. I think that the big ticket items that I believe would make the biggest impact, just architecturally, my own professional opinion here to kind of rectify. Obviously the dormers, the actual mansard roof on the dormers. Adjusting the dormer as we have it rendered, um, on the, you know, front corner, that bent in one. Um, I don't have an argument for the railings. I, I, they are inconsistent. So I, I think that would certainly help. And then I think, you know, I, I honestly, I know the bay windows are a point of contention. I really. In the updated look, I, they're thicker, but I do believe that those. Those to me are at least acceptable in the sense of the overall, uh, composition of it. Once we make those changes. Um, and then obviously the one big last piece, which is a, you know, a gigantic undertaking on a, a building this size, which I can't speak for is obviously the, the roof shingles and the color of those as well, which. I think obviously the board has made it pretty clear that that was not what you were looking for. It was like more of a lighter. Um, kind of drifty gray look, I think is what we had. It was like gray. Um, I know we can't approve anything, but are there any real negative knee jerks or absolutely knows from individuals on the board? That I could at least get some sort of, not direction, but just a, a mission to kind of move towards.
You know, I think, I think you need to add the front door into that mix too. You know, it's, it's.
I love it.
It's gone from like a large glat, like it said, the things that lighten up the facade. Um. So it's become a very conventional door to any store anywhere, you know? Um. So.
Things I would, I would say, obviously with the brick and the foundation work, et cetera, obviously there's framing up above. Would you be open to, um, side lights that were above the brick level? It's not uncommon for that to happen as you transition with the brick. Um, to kind of bring a side light that would be left and right flanking it. But would be able to be accomplished. It would also eliminate that heavy trim, which I think everybody's eye is kind of getting drawn to as well.
Well, the, that, you know, the heavy trim is there on the original. It's part of the pattern, but what makes it look heavy is that the door is so small.
Right, not enough glazing.
Yeah, yeah. So, but, and that's why I say that, um. You know, it needs that other look to, okay, if this is your starting project, this, this is, this is the project you were given as is. And you have to try to improve it to make it lighter. Now what do you do? It may not be exactly the things that are on the rendering. If you're saying. That the, it's prohibitively expensive. Which, you know, bottom line isn't the planning board's problem or Ashley's problem, right? Um, but if you're trying to get a different take on it to say, hey. I can present to you a building that's just as good, that you might like better than the one we originally presented. That's how you have to go about looking at it again. Like what changes can you make? To get that feel back. I'm not sure, one or two of us sitting down is, that's not the right answer. It's, it's looking at how do you get that feel back?
And, and like you said, if you made a rendering with that, with some windows, side lights up there above the bricks and we saw it, it may, like you said, look good, as good or better.
Yeah, which is the, you know.
Fix that area. So, yeah.
And I feel it's just, it's just, I'm not sure it's a situation where just. The low hanging fruit is going to, is going to solve the problem. The problems are too deep. So it might takes more than that, um, to do it, but it's become a very controversial problem in town now. Um, so it, and it took a long time to get it approved. And, and now it's, yeah, it's, it's a problem. So. It's not about piecemealing it. It's, it's really looking at it as a new design problem.
And, and also if like, if like you said, um, if you, Dennis, if you brought a drawing. All those things that you said, fix and put the mansard roofs on the dormers and. Fix that, the vents up there and do the door like that with the side lights and all those things were on this drawing. Now we'd be considering that. But it's, we're still considering that other drawing you gave us, which is almost just like this. So if we had, I'm, I'm not saying I'm totally against some changes that you can do. That aren't as expensive and, but it makes it, gets it back to where the look of the building was.
Okay. Yeah, we'll go back and, um, regroup. I appreciate the comments. And I, Bill, is there anything you'd like to add or?
No, I, I understand where they're coming from.
Yeah. I think, I think I have understood where you're coming from. This isn't a surprise. So I'm, uh, we'll do our, Dan and I'll do our best to. You know, put this back together again, like Humpty Dumpty here.
And I appreciate, I really, I'm telling you, appreciate, so it's not all negative. That you did, you started doing the siding, you started doing that stuff, but there's some major features on there in my opinion. For me, that just need to be addressed too. And if you can address those. And like I said, you don't have to tear the building down. You don't have to do any huge, huge things, but. And, and the roof color, I know, I know that's expensive, but. We went over that. I remember the meeting where we went over that and originally it was black. And we changed it to light because we didn't want a big heavy, it looked so huge up against the sky. In the, in town, and then now it's back to black. So that's kind of an issue with me. But some of these other things I can be fixed. But bring it back to more towards like, like what Trish was saying, we don't want such a heavy building. And a lot of the features that are on there now make it that way.
I would also just advise and that I think, um. Yeah, we were surprised that work was being done on the outside of the building. When we thought work had been stopped. So, and, and I realized it was to kind of correct some of these things. But, but I wouldn't go throwing good dollars after bad, you know, I would wait to get approval from the board. Before putting more dollars into this. You know, I, I, I don't know why you would do that. Um. So it's an awful big mockup to, to do.
Yes. Okay. I'll communicate to the, to Carlos and the client as well. All right.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Okay. We move into the next.
This is the reason that we're going to be very careful, like that we've had these discussions about 12 Pond Street.
Yes.
Any little change that we see, you know, because.
Addressed, yes.
From now and from every project going forward, because this is just, I mean, it's not our problem. But it's just, it's so frustrating.
Okay, so now we're going to, you're muted Emma, just in case you, um, overwork on reorganization.
Hearing the frustration is not how it, how it feels back here. It's kind of.
Well, we're.
Trying to work things out together and staying quiet in the background is what I'm doing.
But Mark, we're not having public comment yet, so.
Exactly.
So is that what we're going to reorganization? We got a vote for a chairman, a vice chair and a clerk, right?
Correct.
Okay. Now we're going to have 10 minutes of silence, everybody.
Well, it's a little, it's a little different doing this over Zoom versus sitting next to each other at a table.
Yep. Can't throw anything at me, Joe. Well, why don't we just let Emma run us through it?
Now, what's the process? What do we do?
Well, when someone, we have to nominate a chairperson, a vice chair and a clerk.
All right, well, I am going to nominate Dale to take over the chairmanship. He's obviously shown some leadership at this very meeting. Keeping things under control, yet having a strong voice. And I'm, uh, I'm, I'm throwing that out there. Don't know about having the guitars in the background, but.
Yeah, now I'm going to have to put like, you know, zoning rules and stuff on the wall and have. Did have the town seal behind me.
That's right.
I.
Well, I'd be willing to do that. So it, it, just so you know, I'd be willing to, um. Make my way through it. I think I've learned enough over the years to be able to. Some, make it through meetings, so.
I, I would, I would, I would second that, um, you know, Trisha's, um, you know. Motion and, and, um, yeah, I mean, I think, I think you'll, you would do great Dale.
Okay, should we take a vote? All is in favor of nominating me for chairman?
Well, elect.
I'll let you guys go first.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Joe Ruperton, aye.
Do I have to abstain since I know myself? How's that work? It could be conflict.
You can vote.
An aye, okay, I'll do it. Dale Buchanan, score zero, zero. There's a new sheriff in town.
Congratulations Dale.
Now I'm the chairman, so I'm going to say, we're going to go, now I'm going to take charge. Now we need to elect a vice chair. Joe's been the vice chairman. I don't know what he feel, how he feels about that. You have to take meetings if I'm ever out.
I mean, I would be, um, I would be willing to continue in the position if it so pleases my fellow board members.
And if there's anybody else that's interested?
I would be happy to have Joe continue. I've only had one year on the board and I feel like I have a. I'm happy just to kind of observe another year and see how things go. So I'd be very, very happy with that leadership and, um.
So you're nominating?
I will nominate Joe for vice chair.
I'll second that. All in favor of Joe or Joe Ruperton for vice chair? Dale Buchanan, aye.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Joe Ruperton, aye.
Score is zero, zero. Joe's back in his same seat. Now we need a clerk. Guess what, Trish?
Frankly, I don't even know what the clerk does, but I think.
Hey, let me tell you, I've been a clerk for four years. I signed two documents.
Oh, that sounds.
Four years.
That sounds pretty, um, pretty time consuming to me.
However. However, I've heard, I have heard that if Emma and Pete aren't there, the clerk is responsible for the minutes. Which scared me for four years, but it never happened. But we record everything, so it really doesn't matter anyway, right?
Actually, a wonderful.
I would like to nominate.
Right, our minutes. So it would have to be if Linda, Emma and Peter aren't here. So.
Okay.
Let me back up.
I would like to nominate Trish if she would like to be the clerk.
I will accept the nomination if I'm seconded, I guess.
And I second that nomination.
All in favor, Trish Kendall for clerk? Dale Buchanan, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Joe Ruperton, aye.
And Trisha Kendall, aye.
Passes four, zero, zero. And Trish is the clerk now.
That was very controversial, these, uh, this committee organization.
Heated.
Need to have another one for. Find another position for something. And there's some other, there's some other, um. Issues. We have to get another board member, right? And is that the selectmen and are they going to send us people to? Recommend or like we did before, they come into us? How's the, Emma, do you know?
I believe the search is ongoing now, uh, viewing the talent bank and hopefully there will be, you know, someone up for consideration soon.
Okay. And they come to, we don't approve them, but we recommend or something, right? Or we send a recommendation. I remember we had.
Yeah.
Openings before they came in and talked to us and everything and we recommended. A candidate a couple of times. So, and then.
And the select.
And, and I think joint board, right? The joint board has to get together and we all approve them. Okay, so that's the process on that. So they're working on getting some applications. Okay. Do we want to do minutes now?
I'm just, just one more thing. We should also, um, keep an ear out that, um, two, right, two of the five. Um, design review committee members have resigned. So I do have someone, I won't mention the name here because she hasn't, hasn't actually officially applied yet. But I, I do think I have one person who would be a, a qualified candidate who I, who I think is interested. So. Um, but would, there would still be one still open.
And do we have, do they have a quorum on that or it doesn't matter? They're just, they're just advisory, right?
Um, so they do still have a quorum with three out of five, uh, so they can act if necessary, although there's nothing on the docket right now that requires them.
They're, they're advisory, so it's really that they, they vote to advise us to do. And they have a lot of good recommendations, so that's good. Good, get some more good people on there. All right. Anybody else? Joe, got anything?
So the, the only, the only other things that I recall we've dealt with in the past. As part of these reorganizations has been appointments. So there's a number of appointed roles. So as an example. I sit on the C P D committee as the planning board representation on that committee. And I, and, and, um, I'm, um, I'm, for now, I'm happy to continue in that capacity if it pleases my fellow board members. if it pleases my fellow board members. Um, but I think in addition to discussing that, I think there's one or two other appointments that, um, we need to revisit, because I think Preston held at least one or two of those others, so. Not sure if we're ready to deal with that, but Emma, do you have thoughts there?
Let's, let's get Emma and Pete to put together a list of the committees that we need to point and do that all in one meeting, I think.
Yeah, I can include that on a future agenda. I don't have a complete list with me right now, so I think pushing it, uh, in the future would be good.
Okay.
Sounds great. I just wanted to raise that. Cool, thanks.
All right, anybody else? Anything on the reorganization they can think of? We'll bring that up when we get, get all the list of all the appointments and everything. How about minutes? Would you like to move on to approval of minutes from June 22nd, 2020?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
I'm good.
Um, just getting them open. This is June 22nd.
Yes. Everybody let me know when you're good. Everybody okay yet?
Yeah, I think that so far they're very well written.
And then I'll entertain a moat. You good, Joe?
Um.
I'm not, I'm not finished yet, but they're.
Okay, we'll wait a second. I'm getting a little anxious. You guys put me in charge and I'm.
On 71 through 73, Mr. Bond's comments regard, regarding, uh, it says hammering restrictions. I, I think it was in, I think it was specific to rock, rock hammering or rock crushing.
Yeah.
As opposed to, I mean, hammering could just be like
Framing wood.
Framing, right? So he suggested adding
Hammering.
Or, or hammering or rock crushing restrictions to the conditions. And then did we address that, I guess? Like, he raises the point.
Yeah, because he says he suggested adding hammer restrictions to the conditions that add, addressed rock crushing. But that.
Okay, okay, got it. But, and then I think, I think, I don't, I think we, I think we, I think, I thought that we concluded that we, that the, uh, I guess I don't remember what we concluded there for a second.
I, I don't either, actually. I mean, um.
My sense is that we didn't add something specific. We felt it was covered by some other condition in the, in the, in the decision. I don't know. Emma, do you have any recollection on that? It's kind of like a dangling participle or something.
Um, I'm quickly reviewing the decision, um, but I'm happy to also review the tape and make that more specific.
Want to just go over this again at the next meeting? If it's that, what are you trying to say, Joe, that we addressed that with some kind of a?
You know, we, yeah, we, we make reference to his comment and concern, but the minutes are silent as to whether we addressed it or whether we didn't. And, and if we, you know, if we addressed it by saying it was addressed in another manner, just yeah, it's just kind of a little bit, it's just kind of hanging out there. So it's not the end of the world, but.
We're addressed it in the decision.
So, um, it is addressed in the decision. Condition number 25, uh, stipulates in the event of rock crushing on site, and it goes on to discuss the steps.
So maybe it had that, it was the board addressed it in the decision.
Via, via condition number 25 or something, yeah.
Yep.
Oh, and that, thank you. This was the special one. It was Tuesday, it was Tuesday, the 22nd, wasn't it? Yeah, the Monday that.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was the one that was only 181 because we had an issue with the posting and that's why. So it's just 81. Yep, okay. I think.
At the very end of the adjournment, did Preston wrote, Crowe give a nay on adjourning meeting?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, he did. He did.
He did?
Yeah.
Just to be refreshing, okay?
That's right, exactly. Just to go with the bang, you know?
It's just weird because ready? Well, I'll address, I'll entertain a motion to approve the June 22nd, 2020 minutes with the changes that we discussed.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, Dale Buchanan, aye.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Passes four, four, zero. Okay, now. Any other, any?
What do we have on the agenda coming up in two weeks? Anything?
On August 13th, we have the Winnebago Drive subdivision modification, um, as well as a presentation about the downtown zoning project. Uh, and then, um, I think we'll be determining dates for 12 Pond and 128 Main. Uh, so they may, uh, be at the next meeting and they might be at the one following.
And Charlie Zamoto may be back with. He said we'd have the renderings at the next meeting too, and that's, you know, we'll be notified of that, I'm sure, when the agenda comes out.
Uh, but besides those, um, that's about it.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything to report and talk about? All right, I'll entertain a motion to end the meeting.
Uh, could I speak or ask a question of the board for, for something in the future?
About, yeah, just make it brief if you can.
It will be, it will be brief and this is gonna be through you newly chairman. And I need to have a quick answer from the rest of the board. Is any more subjects? Oh, should I ask, I'll ask you this one. How many more agenda items will be coming up for, uh, public inputs? How many more will be coming up? Or is that gonna be determined at the time? The only reason why I'm asking that, because I'm, I'm, again, it's a new board and new attitude. And I'm finding out, I'm finding, that's what I'm, that's what I'm wrong. That you're gonna try to cut out citizens' participation.
We never know and never say anything about cutting out citizens' participation. What do you? It's if, but you can't, uh, Mark, you have to understand if we're in the middle of a discussion, then we sometimes don't take for citizens' participation in the middle of a discussion between the board members.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean you're cutting anybody off. It means that we're discussing business. So we're not trying to cut anybody off.
So, Mark, I mean, I, I don't think anybody, I mean, first of all, it's not even possible to cut off citizen participation because that's the whole point of the public nature of this. I don't think anybody on this board wants to limit public participation or public comment on anything. I mean, um, you know, thi- this was Dale's first night as kind of running this thing and, you know, apologies if we didn't, um, you know, stop for, 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 for a comment. You know, I think, um, you know, we're all just kind of going through a transition here, but I, I, I don't know. I, I think I'm even comfortable speaking on behalf of the rest of the board, like nobody here wants to suppress public comment or input, so please don't, please don't draw that conclusion if we, you know, we're a little, a little, uh, off kilter tonight.
And, and I understand on Zoom, it's different than being in a regular meeting, because at a regular meeting, you, you really, people don't, aren't supposed to stand up and, you know, talk while we're discussing business. There's a, be a time for it. But on Zoom, everybody's in there and you just pop in. It's just, it's timing. That's all. No one's trying to block anybody out. We're just trying to get through what we're getting through.
Hey, Tricia, anything from you?
Uh, about what?
I have from the whole board as a whole for this part, because it is, it is, when sometimes gets on the agenda as an item, it doesn't, it doesn't say public or not. But I said it's up to the chairman to say so.
Oh.
Exactly.
I, I always assumed that public comment was a part of everything, like otherwise, why do you have an audience? Why, why can't we, otherwise would have it be a closed meeting? So it's obviously intended to have public comment because the public are allowed in, so. Kind of a no brainer on my, from my perspective.
And to Emma, to you and, and Peter, who does the, the agendas, before it gets passed out to the board, we had them out in their notebooks and stuff and put it in front of them. It's in, it's up to the board, your board area in the Tower Hall to title public or non-public inputs at that time before you print the agendas, right?
Well, they have to announce public hearing. If it's a public hearing, that'll be a.
But I'm just, I'm, I'm just bringing it up because I know that comes from Peter and Emma in, in the, the board office first before it gets in your hands and before it gets on the website itself. So Emma, that's, that's why I'm doing whole board plus you. And actually, you're new, so I, I'll be, I'll be asking your opinion at here, Emma. And I want to hear from, as the board is, and actually too.
Mark, I agree with the rest of the board that this is a public hearing, uh, or sorry, a public meeting. Uh, for public hearings, there's a set time for public comments that is part of the structure of a public hearing. For other agenda items like the discussions we've had today, I, you know, it is at the discretion of the board, of the board and the chair.
Okay, Alexa, excuse me for not saying your name right.
Yeah, so I, I agree with the rest of the board. This is an open meeting, so, um, the main reason for opening meeting is for the public listening and giving their input. So I totally agree with the rest of the board that that's the main point of having a public meeting.
I also think that said, it's, it's important for the, um, for the board and especially for the, the chairperson of, of the board to, um, to keep the meetings running smoothly and that, um, that, uh, being here all night talking about an issue isn't the best way to handle it, so, um, so there's also some limits on, on comments as well.
I'll, I'll end, I'll end on that, what Tricia just said, and I'll say, don't have all night. And got certain time limits and all that stuff to, to talk about each one. But that's the attitude I'm talking about, trying to cut out and speed up to get done.
Well, I think there's, I mean, there's always a, there's always, um, possibilities, I, you know, um, that, uh, that the, the meeting is going on and the issue is being pressed for no, for maybe for no reason except someone once, isn't presenting any new ideas, any new data for us to deal with. And is just, um, you're just continuing to repeat points. And then it's, then, then it's not, um, that's not the point, I think, of the public comment, is to get fresh ideas out there and to be able to discuss those points. And not to be able to, um, you know, just use it as a, as a platform to, you know, to lecture the public, I guess. So it, it is also about, um, coming to a decision, you know, talking about things intelligently and coming to a decision.
And I'll say, uh, very last point, left, last sentence. Chairman, vice chairman, clerk, Emma, and Alexi. You, you people, other than Lex, actually, has seen me around, seen me at all meetings and talked in front before. And I know that at Tower Hall, it's, it's harder to hit me and lie, but Zoom, you got an advantage to mute the person. And I, I, I would understand if I get muted, that means you don't want to hear. And that's, that's the chairman's prerogative. That's the attitude and positivity and understanding. And I've been through the, Preston, when he was there, he did that once or twice before.
And just so you know, it's also a chairman's job to keep the meeting flowing and keep everything on, on the straight and narrow. So if somebody is cutting in, in the middle of a conversation that the board's having, then maybe they need to be muted and they can be heard later. So it's not that we're trying to stop people from their point of view. It's that maybe right at that moment is not the time to chime in. That's, you gotta look at it that way, too.
I see both ways, I understand. It's compromised to be together, I understand, all, you know, around circle. And it's also time to say that you go over your time and the time, that is now that I'm making you guys do, now which I appreciate this. But the last two or three meetings, it's been no public input. And that, that's what brought me to this thinking tonight. So I was gonna say I'm done. When I'm on with you, with you guys and you see me, it's, I'm a knowledgeable citizen that's been around for the years. And I can understand if and when or not to go. And I understand it at every meeting. I'll go with the board's decision. I'll go with everybody's understanding. I realize that the public might have something on their mind too. Thank you. I muted myself.
All right, Mark, thanks, because we appreciate your input.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it. Me too.
So now I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting at 9:04 PM.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, Dale Buchanan, aye.
Trisha Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
All right, thank you and good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night. Thanks, Emma. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.